Is she going around picking the picture of most of you, but if you haven't already done so, please could you just sort of pick to show that you're here. So thank you all for coming. I'm Caroline Hunt, I'm Strategy and Economy Manager with the Greater Cambridge Shared Planning Service and previously Planning Policy Manager again for the Shared Planning Service and prior to that for South Cambridgeshire District Council. So we're here this evening to talk about the Cambridge Local Plan and I've been involved working with city colleagues all through the preparation of that plan in my role in taking forward the South Cambridgeshire Local Plan. The team here with me this evening are Amanda Thorne, a Principal Planning Policy Officer in the team and also group's Senior Planning Officer. We'll be sharing a presentation this evening and we're happy to take questions, I suggest probably at the end of the presentation if you can bear with us and hold those thoughts as they occur to you as we go through, I think that's probably going to be the best way to do this. Just first a few housekeeping, we're not expecting any far drill, if there is an issue out by the wall and rounds and round into the Peace Hill exit which is the Cambridge Ops Theatre side, there are hopefully it is just a little left outside the door. So, this evening we're going to focus on the adopted local plan, we'll take you through the background to the plan, the significance of the plan, its role in the planning process and then take you through some of the key issues within that plan. Today we're not really focusing on individual detailed planning applications and so on, but we're very much here to help with an understanding of the local plan and its role here. And then at the end I'll say a little bit around what's next, because obviously life moves on, we're already in a situation where we're starting to think about the next local plan, which we believe, so we'll talk about the adopted local plans and then at the end we'll talk a little bit about the plans that we're starting to prepare moving forwards. I mentioned the Greater Cambridge Planning Service, I think it's perhaps just worth mentioning, the City Council, Cambridge City Council remains a local planning authority in its own right, as does South Cambridgeshire District Council, but the councils have decided along with a number of other services to pursue a shared planning service. And we're at the stages of taking that forward, so the management team was in this place a year ago and I'm part of that management team and we're at the stage of moving into a second phase and looking to implement over the coming months a full and integrated shared planning service. But I think it's important also to recognise that the policy teams in the two councils have worked really closely together for a number of years preparing those two separate local plans for Cambridge and separately for South Cambridgeshire, but as those of you that's been following the process for quite a number of years with a very much a parallel and often joint sessions through the public examination stage, recognising the very close physical relationship and the way that the area works very much as a Greater Cambridge area, so we now, the term we're now starting to use is Greater Cambridge for talking around planning in this area and I'll say a bit more about that towards the end. So starting with, you know, what is a local plan? What's its purpose, what's it about? It's actually a really important document because it is a statutory document, that means it has legal weight, it's the framework for making decisions on planning applications, it's the starting point, you make decisions consistent with the development plan unless there are reasons, particular reasons why you shouldn't, that's really important from that point of view. It sets out how much development you need, particularly jobs and homes, also the services and facilities and infrastructure to support them and the sites that should be developed to provide for those needs and also then a range of policies that help to determine those planning applications, covering all sorts of things, ranging from the need to provide affordable housing in housing developments, the need to protect important open spaces, how we make sure we protect important historic assets, a whole range of policies to manage those development proposals that we're using. So the local plan was adopted in October last year, some of you will realise it had quite a long journey. It's, the work on both the Cambridge and the South Cambridgeshire Local Plan started back in 2011 with the first issues and options consultation, a second one in 2012 joint with South Cambridgeshire, leading to a draft local plan in 2013. And that was the plan where there was real opportunity to put in representations and the objections that were made at that stage were the ones that were then considered through a public examination led by an independent planning inspector, or in our case, two planning inspectors. And that examination started later in 2014 with some of the big strategic issues and we'll come on and talk a little bit about those in a minute. Some of you will remember our inspector wrote to us in May 2015 and said there were some issues that she felt she needed further information on, that we needed to do some further work, and that was around the strategy, it was around whether we were fully evidencing and supporting the strategy that we put in place in those two plans, and I'll talk about the strategy in a minute. We did that extra work, we submitted it to the inspector's examination review. Now, I'm sure for those of you that were following the process, it felt a long time from submitting that evidence back in 2016 through to receiving the inspector's report ultimately in August last year, and it was a long time, it was unusually long, we felt it was, you know, it felt a long time to us too. We are where we are, we got to the end of the process and I think the really, the important thing to remember is that the inspector didn't make many changes to our either plan actually, she very much supported the changes the two councils proposed their respective plans and very few changes beyond that. So it might have taken quite a long time to go through that process, but the plans were ultimately supported at the end with adoptions, I'll say, in October 2018 for the Cambridge Plan. So where does the local plan fit in into the planning process? As I said, it's a really important document, but it doesn't work in isolation, it's not something we can just write on a whim saying, you know, covering issues in exactly the way that, you know, we might choose to do. We have a, we have a framework to work within. Government sets out national planning policy in the National Planning Policy Framework or NPPF. It's called guidance, but ultimately we very much have to follow the guidance within that document. That's the document that we are tested against when we get to that independent examination. There's also National Planning Practice Guidance which sits under the NPPF and again that provides with a little bit more guidance from government on if it expects, how it expects we approach some of these issues. The development plan comprises a number of documents, so I said the local plan is part of the development plan, but it's not alone. There's also a Minerals and Waste Local Plan that's prepared by the County Council, the Minerals and Waste Authority, and we also have the opportunity as local planning authorities to prepare area action plans, and you may remember we did prepare those in the last round of plan making, one for Cambridge East for example, and one for North West Cambridge, the Eddington Development as has now come forward. And also there's the opportunity now to prepare neighbourhood plans. It was quite a slow start to neighbourhood planning in the Greater Cambridge area, I would say. In South Cambridgeshire there's now quite a lot of interest and the first neighbourhood plan has been adopted and we have another now at examination with others, others in preparation. In Cambridge, Newham is a, is a community that has decided to, it would like to prepare a neighbourhood plan. It's, it's a little different in the two areas, so for South Cambridgeshire, we have an area with parish councils and the way that neighbourhood planning is set up is if you have an area with parish councils, parish council is responsible and has the opportunity to prepare neighbourhood plans. In an area without parish council, the local communities can set themselves up and indicate a desire to take forward neighbourhood planning. So there are still opportunities within Cambridge, so far to say, just the one community looking to do so. And then underneath the development plan, there's the opportunity to prepare supplementary planning documents. They provide further guidance, they have to follow the local plan, they can't create new policy, they can only supplement policy in the adopted plan. So there are some already prepared on the back of the adopted local plan, so for example, Land of Cherry Hinton, there's a supplementary planning document, Littleton's Corner and various others, and also some following topic areas, so for example, the Cambridgeshire Love and Water SPD, if they're called for short. So that's a bit about what's a local plan, what's the strategy in the Cambridge Local And how did it come about? I guess it's also really important, isn't it? So, as a local planning authority preparing a local plan, we have to identify objectively what our housing needs are. At the time we were preparing the adopted local plans, there was very limited guidance on how that should be done, the National Planning Policy Framework was quite new at that point, so we were very much, you know, one of the first trying to explore how we identified our housing needs. But we did that and that was found sound by the inspector, so for Cambridge for the period between 2011 and 2031, so the plan period covered by the adopted plan, 14,000 new homes. And for South Cambridgeshire, nineteen and a half thousand new homes, the total was thirty-three and a half. Quite a lot of those have permission now, some of those have already been built since 2011 and the plans together include allocations and assumptions that at least provide for that thirty-three and a half thousand new homes. And it's also worth bearing in mind that government does test us on the implementation of our plans, it tests us on our housing supply, can we continually demonstrate that we have sufficient land to meet our housing needs over the next five year periods. So each year there's an expectation that councils will look at preparing what's called the Housing Checkery, it's effectively, it's a programme that looks at the phasing delivery of our, of the sites we're relying on to meet our needs. Some of you may know that, and have picked up that in South Cambridgeshire, it's actually quite a difficult time over the time that the local plan was being prepared, because at that point the council wasn't able to demonstrate it had five years of five land. If you are in that position, your housing supply policies, in other words your local plan, is regarded to be outdated and you have much less control over where development goes, the test is different. And that was really difficult for South Cambridgeshire, particularly because we had argued, and argued to our inspector, that actually this is one development strategy, and we'll move on to that in a moment, one development strategy for Greater Cambridge and that we should be looking at the phasing of the rear county and cross the P2 together. Ultimately the inspector did agree that that was the right approach, but South Cambridgeshire was in a difficult position in that intervening period. So housing supply is important and the local plan to offer separate plans, we look at housing supply together. And government has very recently introduced a new test as well, so not only supply moving forwards, it's also housing delivery. So we are now on an ongoing basis going to be tested on, are we delivering housing against our plan? The amount we projected we were going to deliver, are we delivering it? And ultimately if we don't, similar functions apply really. So the local plan is really important, a really important tool as part of maintaining control over the development that comes forward within our areas. And jobs, you know, jobs are really important, aren't they, to a successful area? And, and the Greater Cambridge area is a really successful area economically, really important nationally as well as, as well as to the Eastern European region. I'll say a bit more later, but some of you will have picked up some work that the Combined Authorities have been doing recently, Independent Economic Commission, and it really identified how important this, this part of the world is to the continued economic success of the country. So the estimates at the time we prepared the plans was for about forty-four thousand jobs across the two areas, picking up on the success, the Cambridge clusters. Oh, oh sorry, thank you very much. So, and the inspector found both our housing numbers within the local plan and the jobs forecasts that we were proposing to sit alongside those as appropriate for, for the local plan. So that's the numbers, the next question was, how do we meet those numbers? Where should the sites go? Where should we allocate land to provide the homes and jobs that the work, the evidence suggested and identified that we needed to plan for? If you go back a couple of rounds of plan making, we used to be given our housing requirement and our strategy pretty much by a structure plan that the County Councils used to prepare, but government changed national policy and that's now a local, a local decision, working with our partners through cooperation. So this plan was the first plan where the council had, had more control over what is the right strategy for the area. And the work we did looked at, well, how should we bring forward a sustainable development strategy? A strategy that recognises the impact of development on things like transport, other infrastructure, schools, services, facilities, the impact that development has on open space, biodiversity and so on, what impact does it have on local communities? And there were a number of options, so we had a development sequence, we established a development sequence, so the most sustainable location would be development within the urban area of Cambridge, close to Jopson Homes, it's already a built up area. The second place you would look is the edge of Cambridge, it's the next closest to the urban area and to those jobs and services. Obviously the challenge here is that Cambridge has a Green Belt and Green Belt is a really important, one of the highest most important national planning policies, consumption against development in the Green Belt, that's the strongest planning protection there is. How should that be weighed though, against the benefits there are of being on the edge of development, on the edge of Cambridge, close to those jobs and services? Compared with the next stage in the sequence, which was to look at new settlements further away from the edge of Cambridge, the other side of the Green Belt, how could we make such new settlements against sustainable development? How could we make sure that there are opportunities for people to access jobs and services either locally or through sustainable mode of transport, not having to get into their car for every trip? That was one of the issues the inspector did challenge us on and we, you know, we, we did extra work to demonstrate to her that the balance here for this plan was to only propose some limited extra Green Belt releases and they were down on the south east side of Cambridge and I'll come slightly more closely into Cambridge in a moment. Very limited Green Belt releases though, because we said that you couldn't release further without having significant harm on the purposes of the Cambridge Green Belt, which is about protecting a compact historic city. Green Belt isn't around pretty landscape necessarily, it's a structural tool, so it's about containing the size and, and setting of Cambridge as a historic town. So the alternative was those new settlements and we were able to show to the inspector that we felt that those new settlements could come forward in a sustainable way with the proposals for high quality public transport to connect those new settlements to Cambridge. The role of the Greater Cambridge Partnership through the City Bill with government, bringing forward funding to help deliver that, that high quality public transport was an important part of the story that we were able to tell the inspector so she could have confidence that, that the infrastructure was capable of coming forwards. There's a slight caveat to that and I'll come back to that in a minute. So looking more closely into Cambridge, I mentioned the edge of Cambridge, so the sites that have been released in Green Belt are on Walter's Courseway, on the south east side of Cambridge, out towards Bacon Park and Ride, relatively modest releases from the Green Belt, I know felt strongly by local community, but it was a relatively small Green Belt release, certainly compared with the proposals that a significant number of promoters put through and tried to persuade the inspector and the council, councils, both councils actually, that that would have been a better, a better solution than the new settlements. The inspector wasn't persuaded that that was necessary and she supported the development strategy as they were proposed. And that strategy builds on the previous strategy, the clay farm in Trumpington Meadows, the north east Cambridge around Eddington, around Nye at the beginning, north east Cambridge, around Cambridge East and I'll mention a little bit more about that in a moment, and also the principle of development in north east Cambridge. So, Cambridge East as we called it, really developed based on, on Cambridge Airport, Marshalls, so when we prepared the last round of local plans, the proposal was for Marshalls to relocate, we prepared an area action plan for that development of around 12,000 new homes supported by services, facilities, jobs, high quality public transport connecting the centre of Cambridge and so on. When we came to prepare the now adopted local plans, Marshalls' advice to us was, "Sorry, we've tried but we at this time haven't been able to find an alternative site, we don't anticipate moving this site for 2030 and therefore the land that relies on the airport relocating won't come forward in your now adopted local plan." So the approach was to continue to allocate in the South Cambridgeshire Local Plan, the land north of Newmarket Road, the Wing as it was called, I think it's got a new name now that I can't quite remember, and also some land north of Cherry Hinton, again land that could come forward with the airport still operating and that was an allocation endorsed by the inspector. And what we said and what the local plan says around the rest of the airport is that it changed it from an allocation into what's called safeguarded land and safeguarded land, as it says on the tin, it is safeguarded for other uses, but it couldn't come forward for future development, housing development, without going through another plan review. So I'm sure many of you will have seen in the news this week that Marshalls have now published a news release that they are now intending and actively looking to relocate their operations and that they anticipate the site being available from 2030 for development. That doesn't affect the current adopted plan, the reasons I've said, but when we get into talking about the right strategy and proposals for the next joint local plan for Greater Cambridge, that's very much something that we will be, be looking to, because we've said it is a suitable, sustainable site for development in the past, we've safeguarded it for, you know, to continue to acknowledge that, that view, but we will need to look again through the next local plan. I think the other ones to mention, north east Cambridge, where there's a policy for redevelopment and I'll say a little bit more about that later, because we are actively taking forward some proposals for that site. And lastly for me, before I hand over to Amanda, what the inspector did say, so she did endorse our strategy, she endorsed our plan, she said they were sound and we moved forward to adoption. She did require us to include a new policy in the plan, committing to an early review. And that was because she thought, while she accepted that our housing needs bigger, more reasonable for the purposes of this plan, she wanted us to fairly quickly look to test those figures. That I think is partly in the context of a change in national approach to assessing housing needs, government introduced a standard method of calculating housing needs, so I think the inspector was keen that we, we looked quite quickly at testing whether our needs were right. While she accepted our strategy, it was a sound strategy, sound is the word, that's what she's testing is our strategy and our plan's sound, then we need to check that that strategy is actually delivering, in particular the new settlements, so are those new settlements coming forward as planned? Is, were we right in the strategy that it was, that it was deliverable? We're in a positive situation, I'm largely speaking on my new settlements in South, in Greater Cambridge, not in the Cambridge Local Plan, but in Greater Cambridge and South Cambridgeshire, so Waterbeach, there are planning applications for the two parts of the site and the application by Urban Civic Planning Committee resolved to grant planning permission subject to a legal agreement this week. So, planning application for half of the 10,000 homes in broad terms has now been agreed in principle. There's also a live planning application for the other half of the Waterbeach proposal, which is still being considered by South Cambridgeshire District Council, and for the Bourne Airfield new, new settlement, we also have a live planning application. And to support those, consideration of those, South Cambridgeshire District Council prepared a supplementary planning document for Waterbeach which was adopted earlier this year and we're currently preparing a supplementary planning document for Bourne Airfield. So progress is good on the new settlements, work progressing from the Greater Cambridge Partnership to the infrastructure to support and help deliver those, those proposals and they are really important as part of the strategy for the whole, remembering that they were, they were one of the reasons, they were really important in the consideration of should there be any Green Belt release or should there be new settlements, so really important part of the overall consideration. So that's my kind of overview and introduction to the strategy, I'm sure a lot of you are interested in some of the detailed around what's the local plan actually proposed in some of the detailed policies for how we turn into development. So Amanda's going to take you through some planning.
All right, so in terms of detail, in the Cambridge adopted local plan, what I've got is a series of slides that talk briefly through what's in each chapter, hopefully it will cover more detail at least at a high level, you can see we've got time for questions towards the end. But Caroline talks around the Cambridge Local Plan, it's in wider strategy across Greater Cambridge and spatial strategy set out chapter two, which particularly brings forward the vision, identifies the development needs, we've already heard, 14,000 homes, 22,000 jobs, identifies the spatial strategy for where that growth should go, so identifying, but identifying, you know, city centre, development sites, some of those were allocated in the 2006 plan. Some of those were allocated in the 2006 plan and are rolling forward and are building out. Some are near completion, others are new. Identifies the Green Belt and the importance of that strategic transport infrastructure, hierarchy of centres, so recognising importance of Cambridge City Centre, but that that is supported by a number of other local centres. But then looking to the setting and the history of Cambridge, so the importance of the Cam. What makes Cambridge important, what makes Cambridge what it is. And then also that we are, as Carol has said, committed to then an early review. So that sets the broad theme for Cambridge and how we then look at detailed planning policies beyond that. That strategy for Cambridge is then supported by a number of allocations, identifying the types of uses and growth that's appropriate in the city centre. And areas of major change, opportunity areas and then some site specific proposals. So you can see here, there's various types of things, some which will be familiar to you as sites that have been subject to development for quite some time, others that are newer. We've spoken already about, for example, the opportunities at Walsall Courseway, but also you'll be aware that there's been substantial change around the station already, that there is development coming forward, that Eddington is continuing to build out. So all of these uses form part of the strategy for meeting the housing needs of Cambridge. But we're not just looking for housing sites, that's not what we're all about. It is about managing that growth and change. And one of the big things that we've been keen to embed in the local plan is a response to climate change and managing resources. At the point that this local plan was adopted or was being written, national policy was lagging behind where we wanted to be and we were somewhat restrained. We've gone as far as we can at this stage, recognising that things are moving very rapidly around us and only very recently have been climate change emergencies declared in both Cambridge City and South Cambridgeshire councils, which really set very clearly the aspirations to moving forward to achieving very high standards in response to climate change concerns, resources, use of energy, water, all manner of things. But particularly responding to the context in Cambridge, that's also looking at, for example, risk of flooding. So we're seeking high standards for our new developments in Cambridge. That's not saying that that's as far as we're going to go, it's absolutely not. We're already looking to try to improve those standards. We will be looking at that as we move forward to the next local plan. Chapter five looks at our economy, the Cambridge economy. Yes, flicking over a page. There was previously an approach to economic growth in Cambridge that required that any new proposals set out very clearly that they needed to be in Cambridge. It's very important. But we find now that that very selective management of the economy is not necessary. So there's a broader approach to encouraging economic growth across the city. But there is continued protection of existing employment sites. Locations for university and faculty development in the city centre have been further articulated in the plan, being clearer about what we would expect. And we also strengthened and amended the approach to specialist colleges and language schools, which are slightly different to the general university developments. And particularly set out that those need to provide for their students. So provide them services that they would need while they're in Cambridge. So then looking to the detail of how we're supplying housing in the city. Obviously there's a range of different types of housing, so family housing, housing for different people, student accommodation, and then housing for older people, children, all manner of things. So particularly in relation to student accommodation, the approach has been amended so that we will only accept student accommodation on sites that are not allocated for residential development. But also that we would require any applications for student accommodation to be accompanied by an agreement, a legal agreement, that would particularly set out what type of accommodation is suitable in terms of its type, layout, affordability and maintenance to the relevant institution. And that is particularly in response to concerns that there were a number of in recent years, ad hoc applications for student accommodation that's not necessarily attached to any particular institution and potentially then unaffordable for the students it was purported to be for. So this is about strengthening that position, making sure that student accommodation is delivered for the institutions that require it. Particularly new policies around different types of housing, so accessible homes, seeking properties that can be adapted over time, should that be necessary. So the possibility for those adaptations is built in from the outset. And also looking to, we are applying national space standards. So making sure that the houses that are built are the right size for people to be able to fit all of their stuff in, that they haven't gotten rid of the covers and all of the other things that perhaps we may have found in the past. Only have three quarter size furniture. Moving on to affordable housing, particularly a point that Wendy asked us to cover. Policy 45 requires a graded approach. So for 11 to 14 units, we would seek 25% affordable housing. 15 or more units, 40% affordable housing. So subsequent to the local plan being put through its examination paces, the MPBF was amended and suggested that affordable housing provision on sites of 10 or more was appropriate as a national starting point. So we have presented that position to planning committee both in Cambridge and in South Cambridgeshire and consider that significant weight should be given to that MPBF position. So effectively saying that we will attempt to seek for affordable housing on sites of 10 or more. So between 10 and 14 rather than 15. So obviously there are still issues in some circumstances around viability and those will be discussed on a case by case basis, but the general starting point would be that we would seek for affordable housing at that lower level. And also that affordable housing would need to contain a mix of dwelling types to meet the needs of those that need it. And particularly a point that's in chapter six of the local plan and again one that Wendy asked us to cover, that's one of my views about about developmental garden land, something that has been raised as a concern. Policy 52 in the plan specifically addresses the issue of developmental garden land, recognising that it can be appropriate, but there's a number of conditions which apply in there on that slide which you probably can't quite read. But they are particularly around making sure that any development would be appropriate in terms of form, height and layout, that there's sufficient garden space left once the development would have taken place and the existing space around dwellings is retained, including trees that are worthy of retention. Immunity and privacy, labouring in existing new properties protected, provision for our immunity space and parking provision and no detriment on the effect on the potential properties of development of a wider area. So it's particularly recognising that gardens are an important environmental resource and that vital, a vital component of Cambridge's character. Now that's not to say that development of garden land is always not appropriate, but it sets a very clear parameters to what must be met to allow that to happen. Moving on to chapter seven about protecting and enhancing the character of Cambridge. So this is really identifying what is important about Cambridge, what is it that makes Cambridge Cambridge? And then seeking to include policies that protect that. So it's around the design of new buildings, about the impact of the design of new buildings. A number of points here, but there's also around protection of open space. And there's a strong, there's a strong policy in the plan about protection of open space and how we would go about doing that. So I'm now going to hand over to Bruce to talk through the last few slides.
Yes, so certain of the facilities. So the new local plan includes a more detailed policy for development, the change of use in district, local and neighbourhood centres. So that's in terms of proportion of anyone uses which are allowed or which can be retained. Also includes a policy on safeguarding public houses and their site. This also includes more detailed guidelines on how proposals which involve loss of a public house, how the public house needs to be marketed before we consider it to be no longer viable or if used or wanted by the community. One, Wendy's question was regarding how we promote and support sustainable retail in the city centre. We ensure that the city centre continues to support the multifunctional role by allowing it to evolve in accordance with changing consumer trends by broadening centres appeal. And that's reinforced by policy 10, city centre, which supports proposals which will maintain its vitality and viability. And one example, the line in our proposals for a hotel leisure quarter, which will allow the city centre to broaden its city centre function, a way that fewer can retail to more leisure. Also includes, excuse me, a more detailed policy to do with visitor accommodation and supporting text, which outlines the preferred location quality supported by the council and the treatment of apart hotels and service departments. In the supporting text, it details how service departments and apart hotels will ideally be fitted to a maximum space of up to 90 days to ensure they function as visitor accommodation. I'd just like to point out, the latest figures of visitors numbers in Cambridge is now 8.1 million people, approximately 30% are visiting friends and family. It has a value of approximately 835 million pounds to the economy, accounting for 22% of employment in Cambridge. If I recall, our first data here in 2011, the latest figures for visitors in Cambridge was just over 4 million. So it's doubled in the space of three years. That just gives you an idea of how visitors, and from my understanding, the number of Chinese visitors we can expect from mainland China is actually quite staggering. That's worldwide, but they all have to come to visit a Cambridge, so I think it would only have been increasing.
Can I just say, hold on, I think about that, to say people away. That 8.1 million is in people's visits and includes people who live in Burwell, Camberwell. So maybe I'm just taking the statistics we've got from our business.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that's a business, so it's not 8.1 million people through there. It's a group of people doing the Saturday shopping from that town.
Thanks, I think that's a useful characterization.
Using the statistics from, again, 30% are locals, visiting friends and family, but 30% of 8.1 million, still quite a large number. I'm going to just carry on. So it is, I think also it's important to point out that visitor accommodation proposals need to comply with policy 77 in terms of location quality and all other relevant local plan policies. And these have important strategic merits, which play a role in making attractive investment and delivering vibrant places. Policy 25, which has involved proposals, which has included hotels, which will help meet the lead in corporate demand. So I'm just going to pass over to... So we've spent a lot of time in Airbnb and the council's policy at the moment is to deal with Airbnb through planning enforcement, through loss of residential. It's very difficult to actually pin down Airbnb from a policy perspective. So for example, one week it can be my home, the next week it can be somebody's Airbnb being used. So it's very difficult to pin down for the council. My understanding is at the moment there are 50 separate enforcement actions undertaken to investigate the lawful use of people's residential units for visitor accommodation.
Could I just say, there's a misunderstanding here. You talk about Airbnb, but there are actually about seven companies that have purchased large quantities of property in Cambridge for serviced accommodation. Payments, Myspace, et cetera, et cetera. They may advertise on Airbnb, but these are major companies that have bought. In the case around the station, I wrote to the council and identified this over two years ago. Didn't get a reply. Hundreds, hundreds of flats which should be available to local people have gone over to service departments and to date, the city council's response in this has been supine.
Well, I think we're aware that this is a...
You're aware, but you're not doing anything.
We're aware of the growing issue and it's an issue that has become much, much bigger since the local plan was prepared. We will very much, we are monitoring the situation and as Bruce says, we are taking action in quite a number of cases now. We will continue to monitor that situation. And as we move into, so that's on the development management side of things. But on the policy side, which is where we're focusing our attention tonight, we will be looking at and moving to the next local plan to the issues around, it's an ongoing issue, isn't it, I think? So we will, you know, we will be talking with you and with others around what the issues are that we should be addressing in the next local plan.
But that's the next local plan, sorry, this is 28th of now.
And I appreciate it's an issue that's obviously felt strongly. We appreciate that and we understand that. The service more widely is looking into these issues and we will take those concerns away and share them with our colleagues for perhaps a future session with yourselves. You know, you have future sessions, regular sessions looking at the development management side of things as well as policy. I think we need to focus on the local plan today.
We do, we would love them.
I think I just want to point out, there was a phrase also about section 106. I spoke to the office of deals with section 106 and it's actually referring to the website, which actually details the process for how section 106 monies are allocated. So we don't deal with section 106, so we think it's best that we refer you to the website and that's where it gives you details. And that was updated quite recently, March 2019, of how section 106 monies are allocated.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. That's a run through of the main policies within the local plan. And we'll take some questions in a moment. But just to wrap up our presentation to you, I'm conscious that you've been very patient in letting us, you know, take you through the plan. Just bear with me for a few more moments, I'll just tell you a little bit about what's next. Because we're already moving on, so the planning process doesn't stop. So we adopted the local plan, but we're already moving on to our things and how we implement that plan. So the local plan allocates land in north east Cambridge for development. We're already now preparing an area action plan for that really major, quite exciting opportunity. It's the largest left brownfield site in Cambridge. It's the land on which the water treatment works, local water treatment work currently sits. Some of you may be aware that there's been a bid through the Housing Investment Fund to, for significant government funding for the relocation of the water treatment works to a new site to free up that brownfield site for development. That's passed its first phase successfully and we're looking to move, and the council corporately is looking to move forward proposals for land working in angry water. The city council also owns land within that area. Council's local planning authority, so the planning services role, is to prepare an area action plan jointly with South Cambridgeshire District Council, the area around the new station, Cambridge Old Stations in South Cambridgeshire. So a joint area action plan, looking at the potential for development in that area. Now, the current local plan makes no reliance on any development in this area because at the time the plan was prepared, there was no certainty around relocation of the treatment works. With the successful HI bid, his fund bid, work is now able to progress on the area action plan. So we carried out issues and options consultation at the beginning of the year and we're moving towards a draft area action plan that will go through amendment process around the end of this year and consultation on a draft area action plan next year. And that will also be really important as we move into preparing a new... And that will also be really important as we move into preparing a new joint Greater Cambridge Local Plan between the city council and South Cambridgeshire District Council. Mentioned earlier, we've got a commitment in the local, in the adopted plans to an early review. The councils actually have already committed to preparing a joint local plan next time through the city deal agreement with government. So it's been something the councils were intending to do. The timetable, we prepared a local development scheme, which was agreed in October last year by both councils, which looks to issues and options consultation on a new local plan autumn, certainly by the end of this year. A new local plan brings with it a whole new, whole new start. We have our local plan, we need to look again at what are the housing needs, the jobs needs. It's a new local plan. We have a new national planning framework since we prepared the last plan. There's a different approach on a number of different things, different councils, actually, different administrations within both councils since the local plans were started last time. So we need to understand what the two councils aspirations are for the Greater Cambridge area. So there'll be a lot of work, working with our communities and stakeholders, looking to start with some stakeholder events in the summer. Through to a draft, draft plan next year, an opportunity to input to the emerging proposals, with then a further proposed submission plan in autumn twenty twenty one, submission twenty twenty two, and we're hoping adoption around twenty twenty three. With a new plan period, that's been important thing, what plan we would likely to roll for about another ten years, about twenty forty is the most likely thing, yet to be firmly decided. I think the other thing, just to finish off before we open up to questions, is what's the context now? So we're in a rather different world to the time we prepared the last plan. So I've mentioned the Greater Cambridge partnership a number of times within, within the context of the local plan. The Greater Cambridge partnership's important, however, we now have a combined authority for Cambridgeshire Peterborough. We have a mayor, and the mayor has responsibility to prepare a local industrial strategy, which has been done. He's also preparing a local transport plan, setting out the transport ambitions and proposals for the Cambridgeshire Peterborough areas, and also preparing a non-statutory strategic spatial framework. Non-statutory, but nonetheless, something that will provide a framework and some issues that we'll no doubt want to consider as we're preparing the joint local plan. As you can see, the joint local plan sits at the heart of that wider context provided by the various work and the combined authority. But the combined authority, we're actually at the heart of a number of other significant areas, so some of you will have heard in the past us talking about the London strands, the Cambridge corridor. So there's a really important corridor of growth and successful economies between Cambridge and the links to London to the south. In more recent times, discussions around the Cambridge Milton Keynes Oxford corridor, Camcops Art, which has been called for short, and lots of government interest, National Infrastructure Commission, looking at the significance of that corridor and what role migrant of Cambridge play in that corridor. Recently, there was consultation on proposals for a new railway, east west rail proposals, which would, the options, both of which run through South Cambridgeshire and join into Cambridge from the south into a new spatial Cambridge town. So the context in which the next plan will be prepared is rather different, and we'll need to look at the role of Greater Cambridge within that wider, wider geography. So interesting times ahead, we're very much at the beginning of that process, and we will be engaging with the communities and representatives as we move into that process and throughout the process. So as I say, thank you for bearing with us, that's been, you know, a fairly lengthy presentation to take you through. We will share the slides with you and for you to be able to circulate to our members that may not have been able to come this evening. But we've got half an hour or so now for questions, and any we can't either answer today will take away and come back to you, and maybe we don't manage to get to today, but you'll choose to toss into it as well, and we can respond. So show of hands, I've got one already.
Sorry, could we go back to the slide which showed the green belt, please? Because I'm confused by some of the right, yeah, there.
Yes.
I'm confused by some of the discussions that we have, or maybe the slide before, which shows the area around. I'm confused by some of the discussions that seem to be going on about erosion of the green belt and talk about green fingers and such like, which doesn't seem to be quite consistent with that slide that you've got there.
Are you able to elaborate on it, or in what way is it not consistent?
Well, I would, I would bow to others in this room who have possibly greater knowledge of.
Well, perhaps Richard's referring to a comment that I made earlier. I went to the southeast Cambridge Transport Corridor meeting, where we had parish chairs from the wide area, and also city reps and city councillors. And in terms of some of the discussions about proposals being put forward, I said, so it seems to me there's issues here of environmental capacity for start. So I'm wondering, what vision, what's the plan for the set, what are you working to? And the information we were given was that they were working to the C P report. But I said, but that hasn't even been, that's not, that's not policy yet, that hasn't been approved. I mean, so we're trying to, so what I think Richard's trying to say is that we're getting.
So what I'm saying is, under what conditions, or how robust is that spatial strategy that you've got there, and under what conditions would that green belt be a road with?
Okay, so the green belt is defined in the local plans, that's the statute document that defines the green belt boundaries. The green belt can only be changed through review of the local plan. In terms of what, if we're thinking about infrastructure, we're particularly thinking about roads and upways.
I'm thinking of people coming along and saying, it would be nice if we actually put, shall we say, a bus, sorry, a guided busway around the side of the Gottes.
Okay, so.
And that then opens up the whole area for potential development, because it's a nice southeast, not facing, like, looking across Sherford and that kind of thing. So what would be the attitude then, somebody who came along and suggested that?
So there are a number of issues in there. Of course, as a matter of principle, strategic infrastructure can be identified as an appropriate use within the green belt, or not an inappropriate use, as determined on to use in the national policy, depending on the impact it would have on the openness of the green belt. So there's first, if there's a proposal for a piece of infrastructure, a busway or cycle way or road or whatever, the first assessment is, would it impact on the openness and is it therefore appropriate, inappropriate development? If it's, if it's not regarded, if it's regarded as having some impact on the openness, doesn't mean you can't have development, but it means you have to identify, are there exceptional circumstances that would justify granting permission for something that is contrary to the green belt policy? So the test is, there's option against development unless there are exceptional circumstances. So if you think about, you're trying to do a public transport route from A to B, and you've got the green belt, it's very difficult not to pass through it. So the test is, do you need it, is it necessary, is it impacting on openness, and if it is, is the route proposed an appropriate route? And ultimately, that would be a decision through a planning application.
Sorry, there are thirty people in this room in thirty minutes, and I really don't want to dwell on that. But I think that once you've put that guided, that guided busway from A to B through the green belt, then the next thing that comes along, if somebody comes along and says, we'd like to build your executive houses, I'll leave it to elaborate.
The other thing I would say around that is, the whole strategy, just to remind you, the strategy weighed up, should development be on the edge of Cambridge, or should development be further away, connected to those services facilities within Cambridge? That necessarily requires there to be, in some situations, I appreciate the one we're talking about might be slightly different, but there would necessarily need to be infrastructure to support those development proposals that are further away in Cambridge rather than redup releases. So sometimes it's weighing the balance, and what's the most appropriate strategy and the impacts of that strategy? But I'm sure we'll be talking about the principle of that further coming forward. Yes, sir.
You mentioned the mayor's responsibility for the local transport plan. And I noticed in the presentation, in relation to the current local plan, there was very little content about the local transport plan, which is clearly in need of updating. How is the liaison to take place between the preparation of the new local plan and preparation of the local transport plan? Given the somewhat large distance which tends to exist between the mayor and his activities, and the activities of other bodies, and in the context where we are at the moment actually not keeping pace in infrastructure terms, in public transport terms, with the growth that's actually occurring now, as measured, for example, in the target, which on the basis of two thousand and eleven levels, was a reduction in traffic of ten per cent, which is now, in terms of current levels, a reduction of twenty four per cent. We are not keeping pace with the growth in travel arising from current growth demand. How is this activity, together with the mayor's activity, going to cope with that situation? Plus, what I think it is reasonable to read into what you said, the new demand for growth, which will come through new sites being updated and so on.
We, so the local plan was prepared alongside a transport strategy for Cambridge and South Cambridgeshire, which was a cadaver document to the local transport plan. It very much looked at what are the transport implications of various development strategy options as we were developing the local plans, and the impact of the various different strategy options, and the transport impact were all weighed up in the round in deciding what was the most appropriate option. I think I said a little bit better, so I won't say more again. We monitor the implication, implementation of our local plan on an annual basis in our annual monitoring report, but the implementation of the local transport plan is a responsibility of the higher, the transport authority, which is now the combined authority. So there are implications in developing the development strategy. So the next local plan will absolutely need to take account of the transport implications of that emerging plan. In weighing the strategy options for the next plan, we will need to understand what the transport impacts are. And again, there'll be weighing, probably some quite similar issues, but whether the strategy options are the same, this is kind of something that we need to work through. You know, Cambridge is a focus, it's the largest settlement within Greater Cambridgeshire, obviously, Greater Cambridge, obviously. And we'll need to look at those issues again, we'll need to look at what is the right solution for whatever additional development we need to provide. I think it's worth remembering that the strategy that has been put in place includes quite a lot of big sites that will continue to develop after twenty thirty one. So Water Beach New Town, Bourne Airfield, northeast Cambridge, you know, quite a number of big developments that will continue to develop into the next plan period. So we've already got a start, but we'll need to look at the housing and jobs needs, and both councils have an aspiration to continue the economic success of the area. What does that mean? How do we deal with that in the next local plan? So I think we saved that discussion for another day, but absolutely, you know, there's really important issues in there in terms of how we integrate the transport and the planning development strategy. That's something that was picked up through the discussions in the city deal and very much the aim is how we integrate the development strategy and the planning strategy in the next.
Could I encourage you, I'm from Trumpington, Trumpington Residents Association, could I encourage you to have a similar session in relation to that liaison, that joint planning that you've just talked about? Because frankly, we are not impressed at the moment by the fact that we're falling behind, and you talk about growth. Well, the major piece of growth that's going on in Trumpington, apart from all the new developments, is the Cambridge biomedical campus, which you haven't mentioned. And it's that demand that is coming online at the moment, which is very visible on our streets. And it does seem to us in Trumpington that the local transport plan is somehow kind of out there, and is not being planned in an integral way with the local plan, and that the mayor, who's issued this very bullish statement about the Marshall site, for example, seems to have his feet way off the ground in relation to what's actually going on here and now, and is built into the development that's actually occurring.
Absolutely, we'll be having that conversation from the next time we're making.
I mean, I'd like to just follow up a bit on that, really, in a more general way, because I think people are very concerned about how sustainable all this growth is. I mean, you said that there's a requirement for all development to address climate change. I mean, how compatible do you see growth at this kind of level in the area is with a strategy that is supposed to be going towards zero carbon? It doesn't seem to me that it works, in an area with an impending lack of water.
So, yeah, we're in a, we're in a water stressed area, absolutely, that's an important thing to look into. We need to weigh a whole host of factors, but, you know, the current adopted plans were prepared, you know, started their preparation some years ago now, so lots has changed, and lots will need to be considered as we move into the next round of plan making, absolutely. You know, both councils have expressed their commitment to move towards next zero carbon. We will be looking at how that can be addressed through the development strategy, how you weigh that with the economic success of the area. It's net zero carbon, so what mitigation can come forward to move towards that? Both councils are aiming to move towards that around twenty fifty, our next plan period goes to, it's likely to go to about twenty.
That might be too late. I think it will.
So, you know, we're here really to talk about the adopted plan, aren't we? I'm conscious that we're, you know, there are lots of issues that we'll need to pick up in the next plan, and we will be talking with you as we move forward.
Caroline, just to, just to, sorry, just to follow up, a couple of issues relating to this local plan, and it's because obviously there's ongoing activity which is happening, as Richard pointed out, my comment about the southeast transport corridor. But what is coming up in a lot of discussions, and a number of us attended, for example, a meeting with the Labour Planning Commission just before this, and a couple of issues, some of, a lot of the discussion focused on the fact that who's making the running in Cambridge in terms of planning, and there's a lot of, there are a lot of interest groups, business interests, Cambridge Head, the Suspira Report, which people are feeling they didn't get a say about. And that is determining the agenda.
The growth agenda.
The growth agenda, and that is what people are feeling are no more worried about, because is this sustainable, this growth agenda? You know, as Gina said, you've talked, I think you mentioned the tourism stuff. Right, I mean, we've got, we're just, you know.
Sustainability is an interesting one, isn't it? There are three arms to sustainability. There is the environmental, there's also the social and there's also the economic. And it's how we balance those three different arms of sustainable development, uh, in a way that, um, is most appropriate for this area. And absolutely.
And the next generation.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Without the environmental, the social and the economic are not far apart. Because we live on a planet limited. And it's, it, the trouble is you keep going on about what we, our aims and our aims and our aims. I don't think any, I, I'd be surprised if anybody in the room disagrees with the general aims that you express about, you know. It's, it's all very general, I've read sections of it. But it doesn't define, you know, how are you going to do it? What, what do you mean by appropriate development? What do you mean by sustainable? I mean, you know, I've read in detail some of the sections and it says, you know, as long as it's appropriate, as long as it doesn't disturb other people. None of these terms are then defined in ways that allow judgment. And that's why when, you know, those of us that are involved in the planning process, you go in and there are arguments between the planning officers. And the planning committee about whether or not something is appropriate, whether this design of this house is disturbing to the neighbours or not. And there is no sense of how you measure those things. And so if you have a lovely, you know, general, you know, we all believe, using the American expression, an apple pie in love with. But it doesn't work when we're down in the nitty gritty of a planet that's choking and a city is choking. And when we're talking about major growth in, and I'm sure everybody in this room probably knows, and out in my area, there are too many, there are a lot of houses going up there. The roads are already choked. We're not planning, uh, an underground, we're not planning trams. We're not planning the kind of public transport that actually moves people. You know, look at Europe, there are compact medieval towns with trams, with things that, that work.
Yes.
And we are going to have to tear up some of the streets in, in, in the centre of, of Cambridge to get some of that kind of transport through. I mean, I, I know towns in Germany, amazing, uh, transit systems that go out in this area, but we're not talking about that. It's not good to talk about apple pie above a wood.
So, so the local plan is one part, isn't it? It, it, it can only go so far. There are other discussions happening, um, including with the, um, the, the transport authority, including with Greater Cambridge Partnership. There's been discussions around access to, you know, city centre access, how we go about that. There, so there are discussions happening. I think the key thing is how, is, is to make sure those discussions are happening, but also how we join them up. So I absolutely agree with the gentleman who's raising around, um, the need to join up those discussions. Um, and that is the intention as we move forward to the next strategy. So the strategy and the adopted plan was found sound, it was tested thoroughly through an examination process by an independent inspector. That is now our statutory plan, against which planning applications will be determined until we have the next plan in place. So, you know, that's what we've been talking about this evening. What we're starting to talk about is how life has moved on and some of the issues for the next plan. And we absolutely will be coming and talking to you about those issues. We will be capturing those issues in those future sessions. And we will be moving towards a consultation around the end of the year on what are the issues for the next plan? What are the issues you think we need to be considering? So you've started to raise some this evening and we will take them away, um, and start to feed them into our considerations. We are talking with our neighbour.
Can we have some more questions, Caroline? Just to.
I wonder if I could ask a point of clarification. Um, obviously you, the two thousand, well, the original plan that I know very well, it was the two thousand and six, which went to two thousand and sixteen. Uh, two thousand and sixteen plan was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, late, as you quite rightly point out. Am I right in saying that you're now, you're now putting forward the proposition that that will only go through to twenty twenty three? And that the new local plan will be adopted in twenty twenty three and go through to question mark?
Probably twenty forty.
Right, and, and could I, just a supplementary to that, what went on there? Um, you mentioned about the numbers of housing, uh, that was going to be provided, um, and I believe that, that the figure for the city was fourteen thousand. I appreciate it's a moving target, but are those, is that fourteen thousand in the current local plan? Because I know you didn't meet, the, the city didn't meet its, its target for the two thousand and six local plan, didn't, didn't meet it. So what, what is that figure in relation to the local plan? What's that period for the fourteen thousand houses? I'm a little confused about the timeframe.
Okay, so when you prepare a local plan, you prepare it for a plan period. Um, you have a base date against which you're measuring and you have a period over which you're planning for. And your aim is to have fifteen years of your plan period left when you adopt. However, you don't wait to the end of that fifteen year period before you do your next plan. Government policy is that you, um, review your local plan every five years. Let's have a new plan in place every five years. So it's a rolling period. So that's, so, un- under normal circumstances, if it's a five year, uh, you know, um, every five years. You'd hope to prepare a plan in sort of three to four years. So there's usually a period between adopting one plan, preparing any supplementary planning documents or area action plans that you need. Um, focusing on implementation before you then move into your next plan. We, we got squished because of the length of our examination being much longer than we'd anticipated. And the inspectors saying you need to get on for, for an early review. So we've been much more quickly this time into the next review.
So it's only seven years in the current local plan, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty three?
The current local plan is, the current adopted plan comes up here from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirty one. So the fourteen thousand homes is in that adopted local plan and it's fourteen thousand homes between twenty eleven and twenty thirty one. In terms of how, how we're doing towards that, um, Cambridge is on track, a little ahead of that actually. And that's because the, um, and one of the reasons the last plan didn't is because of those big sites, particularly on the edge of Cambridge. Big sites take a while to come forward. Once they get going, they generally speaking are relatively reliable sources of supply. Um, and that's what we found. So actually Cambridge is a bit ahead of itself now. But when we look at the housing trajectory, Cambridge alone, that forecast of, of delivery. Cambridge actually delivers a lot of its fourteen thousand homes quite early in that plan period, twenty thirty one. Um, and this is one of the reasons why it's a strategy for Cambridge and South Cambridgeshire. Look at South Cambridgeshire, South Cambridgeshire hasn't met its average figure in those early years. And that's why there've been those difficulties, um, in that five year supply. Until we got the confirmation from the inspector, we should be looking jointly. When you put the strategy together, and South Cam, actually, sorry, delivery wants the big sites to come on board more from the middle and end of the plan period. When you put them together, there's a fairly even delivery across the two. So we anticipate, um, a fairly consistent delivery. But we don't wait to twenty thirty one before you do that, and it will be a rolling.
Hi, um, can you elucidate, um, how you designate a space as protected? And can that be changed in any way? Or is it designated protected for particular reasons? Maybe your answer will highlight that for me.
So there are a number of different types of protection of open space. So the green belt is one, the green belt is.
I mean, within the city.
Within the city, okay. So setting aside green belt though, um, there can be other designations, um, uh, you can protect land, um. You can include planning policies within, within, um, local plans to protect open space for amenity reasons. Obviously there are other protections like, uh, such as special scientific infrastructure, like nature reserves or wildlife sites and so on. But if we're talking about more amenity, recreation and whatever, um, there can be, and actually there are in the Cambridge local plan. So the green belt actually does, um, have fingers that come into the heart of Cambridge. Those green corridors are really important, a part of the structure of Cambridge. Um, so a couple of commons are protected with green belt, for example. Um, but there are other more local protections. Um, government also introduced, um, in, in the last round of National Guides, something called Local Green Space. Uh, which is, um, an, another option open to local funding authorities. So there are local green spaces in the Cambridge local plan. Um, it was something that was explored within the South Cambridgeshire local plan, for example. So as we move forward to the next plan and reviewing, bringing two plans together, we'll be looking at what are the right designations, um, for, for that joint local plan. Um, and that would include reviewing any of the current designations that are and thinking about any others that might be needed.
So I'm, so I'm thinking of a particular area that has a designation of protected status.
Okay.
But it's being contravened, is that allowed? Should that happen?
Okay, so.
Can it be built on?
So without looking at the, so, so it depends what the policy says to some extent. Um, but I suppose the other thing to note is that, you know, the, the, the local plan is the starting point. If we receive a planning application for local planning authority, we have to decide whether, uh, to grant permission or refuse permission.
It's already been granted.
Okay.
It's, it's listed.
Okay.
It's listed in the Open Space and Recreation Strategy and the local plan from twenty eighteen.
But if we were, if, just theoretically, if we receive a planning application to develop, let's say, housing on a site that is protected. Um, you can't, you know, you have, you have to look at it on its merits and you have to say, okay, well, that's protected for this reason. Um, this is what the policy says, how we'll protect that or what considerations we'll give, what impact would that proposal have? Is there any reason that we should depart from the local plan? If you can depart from the local plan, if there are really good reasons why you should. Um, but it's, it, the local plan is your starting point for, for making, uh, decisions on planning application.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's very helpful. It seems like it's a sliding scale of protectedness. It's not really protected.
Green belt is the strongest. If you have a local protection within, within a local plan, it's a local designation as opposed to a national designation. So there are different levels of protection, actually. Um, but you would, um, I think maybe it's, maybe it's just worth saying, we have got policy in the Cambridge plan about protection of open space. Uh, which sets out quite clearly what the parameters are where it may be considered that a loss could be acceptable. And that's, that's clear, so set what would have to be met to, to make any proposals acceptable. Um, so, you know, by and large, a presumption is don't lose open space. But there may be some instances where the benefits to the development proposal are such that it could be considered acceptable.
What about for the residents?
For the criteria that would have to be met.
I mean, you talk about the, the benefits to the development proposal, but what about the existing residents in the area and the benefits to them of the development proposal? Which isn't likely to be in place.
That's the balance that we need to be reached in, in history in the planning application is that you'd have the existing use and the function that it serves. The proposed use and the proposed function that it would serve. And, and making that balance as to whether or not any loss that would be proposed would be accepted and taken into account as proposed through that new scheme. Um, so, you know, we're just talking about.
Does it look like food health impact assessment? Anything about the health?
Health impact, second. Uh, not in the Cambridge plan. Again, that's something that is in the South Cambridgeshire local plan. So for the next plans we're bringing together, we'll have to be able to have those considerations for the right approach in the joint plan. It doesn't mean that health isn't taken into account because the impact on health, including things like the benefits of, uh, open space to active lifestyles and so on. You know, they are, they are taken into account.
I mean, just to flag up, because that was found to be an issue with the Cambridge station area development where all those youngsters were allocated. It was development without anywhere for them to play.
No, the council took a great cut, three hundred, nine hundred thousand pounds, I believe, in section one oh six money in, in exchange for the lack of open space. I mean, God knows what happened to the money, but that's what they took. Of course it wasn't bribed, was it? Oh, it went to Coleridge Rec, yeah.
They meant to walk to Coleridge Rec.
Yeah, they're meant to walk to Coleridge Rec. Hmm, won't go there, a bit embarrassing, eh?
Can I just come in?
I'm, I'm not interested in that particular issue because that's not, uh, that's not within that planning policy, uh, context that we've been involved with. It's if, if it's something you'd like us to take away to provide you with, we're just happy to do that. Um, we, we're getting close to way across a few more questions.
Yeah, I mean, overshadowing all this is that probably most residents feel that planning is something that's done to them. And although this is a start, it really is just nibbling at it. Where a lot of grey haired people who've got nothing else to do on a, whatever weekday it is, evening. Um, and if you went and asked most people, uh, whether they thought we needed ten thousand houses at Water Beach, ten thousand houses at Marshalls, ten thousand houses at Norstow. They'd probably say, well, all of England can't move here. Yeah? Why, why do we actually need these houses? What we do need is houses for our children and houses that are affordable. And when I heard yesterday that, um, they were going to build on Marshalls. And people seemed to be pleased that we'd be going to getting fourteen percent affordable housing. I was shocked because people ought to be shocked that we're only getting fourteen percent affordable housing on Marshalls. Why aren't we getting eighty percent affordable and a huge chunk of that is social? And what's the council doing to stop that? And, and why is the council being so slow to stop the infill on every city centre site? With student accommodation or with Airbnb? Um, and I've heard you saying you're going to do it, but it's too slow because all these sites have been taken up, which could have local people living in them. So I see nothing to celebrate in fourteen percent affordable at all. I think we should be ashamed of a fourteen percent affordable.
Well, firstly, let me come in on Marshalls. So Marshalls may have made a statement, um, uh, of what they are intending putting forward as a proposal for the next local plan. That local plan, we haven't started that work yet. We, we will be considering, as I said, whether the safety of the plans in the current local plan should now be reviewed in the light of the proposal. That will include a consideration around, um, the overall proposal, including affordable housing. So, um, they may or may not have said something, I don't know that, that particular, uh, statistic. But, you know, the policy in the current local plans are, are for, um, for larger size for forty percent. Um, viability does play into that, um, but, but we need to, to, you know, we will look at that.
Most local people will never be able to afford to buy a house. That twenty two percent of the local economy that you say is employed in tourism, I should think, none of them will ever be able to buy a house. So there's twenty two percent of local employed people for starters who need affordable or social housing.
I mean, the need for affordable housing is really important, isn't it? I think that we, you know, um, councillors, members, the, you know, and us as officers, we're, we're very mindful of the challenges there are for. Um, those living in this area, young people growing up, um, wanting to stay closer to home, those who might want to come and work in the area. The affordability of housing is a serious issue. Um, we've got policies in the adopted plan that, uh, look to make, um, good provision of affordable housing. We have to look, look at that, um, in the context of each proposal that comes to us. Um, uh, it, it is a really important issue and we will look at it further in the next plans. The other thing, I, there was a number of other points in there, weren't there? Um, planning isn't a black and white. It's not a science in, you know, there's a right and wrong, there are very often. There are policies and there are judgments that need to be made in weighing the balance, taking account of all the evidence and, and the period of consideration that's the term used. Um, in weighing whether a, a planning application should be granted permission or not. Um, it's not always black and white. Um, officers go through a process of weighing, weighing up the benefits or, or not of an, of, of an application. Using the local plan and other, uh, any other evidence. Um, and, and planning committee is the democratically elected, uh, body that considers that officer advice and considers, taking account of all the representations received. Through the consultation on the planning applications, whether permission should be granted. So it's, 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 it's not a straightforward system, it is complicated. Um, in terms of whether we need the housing, um. You mentioned we need housing for, for our children. Um, so there's that. Um, ultimately, there's a judgment to be made, um, on how we deal with the economic success of the area. How much we want to continue to support and encourage that into the future. Um, is continuing to support the growth the right thing to do? How can we do that and what is its impact on, uh, the environment, on climate issues and so on? Um, uh, and we will need to look at that again really seriously, how that impacts in relation to, to, to the transport issue. Um, those wider environments, those green infrastructure issues, but that really is for another day. Um, I'm conscious of it now past eight o'clock, are there any last concerning issues? I'm conscious of it now past eight o'clock, are there any last concerning issues?
You talk about local area plans and neighbourhood plans, which is clearly something of interest to quite a number of people here. And the whole idea of the neighbourhood plan or a local area plan is to supplement and flesh out the general local plan for the city as applied to a specific area. We're looking at it up in Castle and High End. Now, if everything is wishy-washy, as you're basically saying, what is the point of developing further plans in an area where a local area group says this issue is applicable to this specific area of Cambridge has not been adequately addressed as far as we know in the local plan? So we wanted to go with the neighbourhood plan. If even the local plan is very chippy, what extra do we achieve or what can be achieved with local action plans or neighbourhood plans?
Okay, so.
It's very important, a lot of people are working on it.
We're not giving.
I'm also looking to give the impression that planning and local plans are wishy-washy. What I'm trying to say is that they are not absolute, you know, planning judgments are not black and white. So I just need to, you know, to make that point. So neighbourhood plans, thank you very much. So neighbourhood plans, neighbourhood plans do have to be in full conformity with the local plan. They can't undo proposals for development, for example, that are in the local plan, but they can add more development, they can look at things like local issues. So for example, the neighbourhood plan that's being adopted in South Cambridge actually is proposing more development within the area because that's something that that community is looking to secure. Other communities are looking at whether there should be, you, services within their areas. There's a whole host of issues that can be considered. You could look at whether there are open areas that you wish to protect within the neighbourhood plan. And the neighbourhood plan is part of the development plan and has the same weight as the local plan sits alongside it. So there are opportunities, you know, government is looking to create more opportunities, make the future. You know, neighbourhood plans can have a role within that. One last question.
Thank you. So one of the things that has been confirmed for me tonight is that during the creation of this current plan, South Cam's planning seems to have been a lot more innovative in terms of some of the mechanisms is incorporated. So you said it includes health impact assessments and the city doesn't. You said it includes local green space designation and the city doesn't. I'm just wondering, with shared services now coming into play for this next local plan cycle, oh, and the village design statements as well, is the city going to get leveled up to the degree of attention which South Cam's has benefited from? Or is South Cam's going to get leveled down to the fairly mundane level of treatment that the city's had over the preceding period?
I'm not sure I'd agree, even in South Cambridge previously, I'm not sure I would agree with that assessment. I think there are different approaches between the two authorities on some areas. I would say that Cambridge has been quite innovative in terms of its approach to things like student accommodation, identifying some important issues, okay? But there are policies protecting open spaces, they've just used different designations. So there are different approaches, I wouldn't want to say one is better than the other. Yes, it's a shared service, it will be a single team preparing the next joint local plan, engaging the communities in both areas around the issues that are important. We can draw from both, we can draw from experience elsewhere, we can talk to you around the issues that are important to you. So I would hope, and my ambition is that we have the best plan possible to present to you forward.
Caroline, I just want to say, what, member Amber is, on behalf of everybody here, thank you very much for giving this presentation. I mean, a lot of questions, but everybody really appreciates your opportunity to have a presentation and to ask questions. We'd love to have, if you would work with us on further sessions.
I think people would really, really appreciate that. I don't know whether everybody else feels the same.